Planning Commission, if we could start with the roll call, please.
All right. Mr. Henninger.
Present.
Ms. Wilcutt. Mr. Harwell. Mr. Rospinto. Mr. Armstead.
Present.
Mr. Broadhead. Ms. Andres.
Here.
Mr. Gulas.
Here.
And Mr. Roberts.
Here. Thank you. Moving on, the next item is approval of the November minutes. They looked good to me. If they looked good to everyone else, I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Communications from Chair and Vice Chair, Mr. Armstead, do you have any communications today?
No communication.
I have none as well, so we'll move on. There's no old business, we'll move on to new business. The first item is a request to review and approve, or recommend approval, of some proposed amendments to the city zoning ordinance. And I believe, Mr. Smith, were you going to present on this?
Yes. We talked in there, and I think the easiest way to do this is for me to just kind of bump down some of the changes. And I guess the next agenda item is the sign ordinance. And so, once we get through with zoning, I'll cut it off and then let you guys ask questions.
Okay.
So, if you remember, we were here a year ago when we worked with the Regional Planning Commission to update the entire zoning ordinance. And the changes made in this go around, it kind of cleans up some of the stuff that we missed and adds in a few things that we've run into over the past year. I'm just going to go down the narrative that I sent. The first one is update definitions to include new definitions, update definitions and include new definitions for amenities, boundary survey, courtyard, hotel motel, and personal services. And then we revised the definition for artificial turf. So, for artificial turf, we made the definition a lot shorter. And then, in the actual section, Article Five of the landscape and tree ordinance, we talk a lot more about artificial turf and where it's allowed and where it's not. One of the changes that we made to artificial turf was that it's still not allowed in the front yards of detached dwelling districts, so like you're NPD zoning. But if it's done right, in multifamily attached dwellings and for amenity areas and then also for front yards of like commercial spaces, it can be allowed. The requirement of a boundary survey for most improvements, including fences, driveway replacement and repair, and structure additions. This was a thing we run into about weekly. So, Hunter does fence permits, we get all these sketches and drawings, and we have been approving fence permits. We don't have any idea where the property lines are. And so, a lot of times, when we do have a survey, we'll find that the existing fence is on their neighbor's property, and then we're approving replacement of it. So, we just want to clean all that up. It will be more expensive, homeowners probably won't love it. But for us to do our job appropriately, it makes sense for us to have a boundary survey. Clarify the intent, continuance, and modifications to non-conforming structures. Those are mostly important words for staff, not necessarily any big changes for you guys. Is that fair to say? Clarify the intent of maximum building height of detached dwellings in the NPD zoning district. An existing topo survey will be required to determine the existing grade at the proposed front foundation wall. I want to spend a second and talk about this. It's so weird that you're sitting over here by yourself.
I know.
No comment.
So, apparently, before I got here over three years ago, there was a lot of discussion about how to regulate the height of a house that's being built in the NPD zoning district. And what they landed on was the grade at the front foundation wall. What they meant was the existing grade at the front foundation wall. But we don't require topographical surveys, so we don't have any idea what the existing grade is at the front foundation wall for somebody who wants to come in, buy a lot, tear down a house, and build a new house. So, what we've run into the past couple of years that some folks have had an issue with is that they build the grade up from the street, and then they consider that new proposed grade as the front grade at the front foundation wall, and then they build their house. So, where your existing grade, sorry, where the existing grade might be a lot lower, they're coming in and building up, adding fill material, and then so their height, their total height is taller from the street. And so, that's what the intent was several years ago. They were trying to prevent it. And they came back to me and said, "We want to," the council did, "we want to figure out a way to go back to what our intent was the first time we did it." So, the only way to do that is for a homeowner to provide a topographical survey. Does that make sense? I talked, we added sections for artificial turf and courtyards. I talked a little bit about the artificial turf part. Courtyards, we've run into a couple of times the past few years where a homeowner wants to build a swimming pool in what we would all consider a courtyard. Common sense would call it a courtyard. Our zoning department calls it a side yard. And swimming pools are only allowed in the rear yard, so they haven't been allowed to be built in the side yard. So, we're going to, we've added a definition for courtyard, and now swimming pools will be allowed in that courtyard area. We added a section for vehicle sales lots, so they're still allowed in M5 and C1. But there's some other requirements that go along with it. Screening requirements. Go ahead. C5 and M1. Okay, sorry. C5 and M1. The size of the lot, you can't put a vehicle sales lot on anything under three acres. We have a lot of existing car lots that are on much smaller acres, much smaller parcels, and probably shouldn't be. Clarified setback requirements for mechanical appurtenances. We added some appurtenances that are allowed now. I think we used to just call out like propane tanks and AC units. Now, we've defined a lot more.
Generator.
Generators.
Because generators weren't specifically mentioned? We had a tough time regulating where they go. And just recently, we had several applications where people wanted them in their front yard. And there was nothing to prevent that. So, we added solar panels and generators. We ultimately decided against above-ground propane tanks or fuel tanks in residential areas for fire code reasons. But it does allow for, it does require now that generators be either in the side or the rear.
Thanks, Sheri. We clarified landscape irrigation requirements. So, according to us, it's always been a requirement that if you're a commercial development, then you have to irrigate everything on your site that needs irrigation. There were some formatting issues with the way it came out last time. And we've been, we got called out on it, and it was true, and so we're just fixing that. The intent is that if you build a new property, build out a new property, and have landscape islands and all these other things, you have to irrigate it. And then, we incorporated the sign ordinance into the zoning ordinance, which is, I think, the next agenda item, so we can talk about that in a second. But I guess at this point, it might be best to hear from you guys, or hear any questions.
Yeah, I guess we need to, Fred, do we need to open this up for public discussion? I can do it.
You sort of can invite any members in the audience that wish to speak to any of these items to do so.
Sure. This is a public hearing. If anyone from the public wants to come forward and speak on these items, this is your opportunity to do so. All right. Seeing no one will close the public portion, at least with respect to the non-sign ordinance portion of this case.
Kale, on the boundary survey, is it that a new one is required at the time of the request for a permit, or can there be an existing boundary survey that would qualify?
Yeah, that's a good question and something that we've talked a lot about. I think what we landed on was that if you have a boundary survey, and there haven't been any improvements made to the property since the boundary survey was done, then you can use that. But what we've also seen is people have said, "I've got this survey, it's only four years old." But then they've also built a bunch of other stuff on the property, and yeah.
Do you know what the average additional cost might be to get that done?
Yeah, so a topographical survey is probably between $2,000 to $4,000. A boundary survey, probably $1,000.
Okay, so a fence that, I don't know, $4,000, $5,000 fence maybe could be $6,000 because of that?
Yep.
It's going to depend on like the size of the lot.
We had a case at council a month or so ago where a property owner was 60 feet into the right-of-way into Alabama Power easement. I mean, Alabama Power ended up working out where they were fine. They don't use that particular part of the easement. Did I have that story correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, that's a great example.
I mean, it was egregious into, you know, a power utility easement.
Right. I mean, what a lot of people will do is print off the tax map and say, "I promise that we're going to stay within the bounds of the property," but that's... Right. It's just a tool that we need, or a resource that we need to do our jobs appropriately as we get more and more strict on building requirements and try to wrangle some of these things.
Are other municipalities locally doing this, where they're requiring a boundary survey?
That's, so, a lot of them do. I don't know, I don't know when they require.
What about just determine improvements if you're replacing an existing fence? The wood's gotten old, and you just need to put a new fence up. Is that considered an improvement for purposes of triggering?
It would, yep. That's right. You don't have to get a permit if you want to replace 25% of your boards. Yeah, you can maintain the fence in place. But, and yeah, what we've seen a lot is people have said, "Yeah, we just want to put the fence back in the same place, and then we have a survey, or they provide us a survey, and then we realize that the fence is actually a foot over into the neighbors." Or what?
Or more, like sometimes they're just like so far off their property.
Right.
Or into the right-of-way, or, you know, in a storm easement or something like that.
Or a public, or a paper alley that other neighbors are using.
That's right.
And we had a variance just recently, or there was an adjustment where somebody was building a fence. I think that's how it all happened. But they were, they had already set their posts into, you know, way off their property into the city right-of-way. And, and first of all, they'd come to us first to give the permit, and we had seen somebody who could have shown where it was to go.
Another kind of thing to note regarding the thing we, and specifically, if we are required to get written approvals from the city government, like Alabama Power or City Council or whatever, before we can approve a fence without a survey? We don't know if there's a, and for example, I think councillor, you know, oh, there's a councillor. We were like, we really need a survey for this. We had easements all over his property, and the fence was like out of line and stuff. And so, if we hadn't replaced it, a survey from him, we would have approved it, stop in a storm easement, and that's really, it felt like it never happened.
And Gusty, you can probably speak to this, but I mean, you know the benefit of just having a survey for your property is, it's not like you're spending $1,000 that's just unnecessary. There is value to it.
Yeah, I mean, there's, we see all kinds of stuff all the time, that a lot of it is fences that are off the line, maybe a couple inches or a foot, and sometimes it's 20 foot.
Right.
You just don't know. So, it's important, I mean, especially you got to protect, you got to protect yourself. So, I agree. I want to ask on the vehicle sales lot, I guess the others, would they be grandfathered in? Okay. So, any new vehicle sales lots would have to be a minimum of three acres?
That's right.
Okay.
Well, or if one of the smaller lots were to like close and move out, and then somebody wanted to try to open up, it wouldn't be allowed? Yeah. We get that a lot. Like, this business used to be here, we should be able to do the same thing that was done for so many years, and the answer is typically no.
Mr. Chair, do you want to handle this in two different motions, or?
Yeah.
Only other place in any city document that states that notification has to be sent by certified or registered mail. The state doesn't even require that anymore, so we updated that. The one change to subdivision radio is to say just United States first-class mail. Then we have the sign ordinance. The changes to the, and moving it from the code ordinances into the sign ordinance, so that it will now be under the purview of the board's any adjustment or any bare requests. The third thing, and these are, we're obviously, the third thing of the updates to the zoning ordinance, just a few tweaks, additions of those definitions and specifications.
Okay, but in terms of voting on these or entertaining motions, obviously, the only thing we've really talked about to this point would be the changes to the non-sign-related changes to the zoning ordinance. So, yeah, I think, I think to your point, yes, I think we could, if there are no further questions, we could entertain a motion.
What clarifications are before we go forward? I don't have the copy of those zoning changes in front of me. Is that document dated? Is there a date that I think that needs to be included in the resolution as set forth in the document, so-and-so?
It's on the city's website. It's got the, it's the...
11/26.
Okay. Does it have a title that would be included in the motion? We can assign a title to it, but it needs to have a date, so we know exactly what is being recommended.
I mean, it's always been considered Appendix A of the code ordinances. So, Appendix A is zoning.
Yeah, well, we could include those, the recommended zoning changes that were presented to and so-and-so, assign a title, but a date. 11/26, though, is what.
Yeah, it's the draft November 26th.
Right, okay.
So, the motion would be to approve the November 26th changes, suggested changes to the zoning ordinance?
I didn't hear. I have your problems. You're so soft, I couldn't hear you. Sorry.
Well, I think I had my hand in front of my mouth, and as my husband says, I do mumble. So, the motion would be to approve the November 26th recommended changes to the zoning ordinance? Is that right?
Yes, something to that effect. That's prepared.
Recommend approval of...
Recommend, yeah.
That's right, recommend approval, because it goes, yeah.
Recommend approval of Item One, which would...
Yeah, Item One.
Should be the November 26th.
Including so-and-so dated, draft document dated, so-and-so.
Okay.
If we could include that, that would be helpful.
That would be my motion. Everything that he just said.
That's a motion I'll second it.
Well, should we do a roll call vote, or just vote by affirmation? Just cleaner to do a roll call vote.
If it's the general consensus of the Plan Commission that they're in agreement, then it would be by acclamation, voice vote, by acclamation.
Okay, we have motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Are there being none that will go forward to the council with a positive recommendation? Okay, so let's, I guess, address the sign ordinance changes and the, I guess, the inclusion of the sign ordinance into Appendix A.
Okay, so we started with the sign ordinance, and the council has been trying to move it into the zoning ordinance for a long time, and so we're finally here, so that's exciting. More so for the council than for us. We weren't going to, we decided along, or like two months ago, that we weren't going to make it like a huge amount of revisions to the sign ordinance, because it was done in 2020, I think, by placemakers, like you said. But we did make some administrative changes. One was to move definitions to the front of the ordinance instead of in the back. We updated prohibited signs to include billboards. We updated the administrative and enforcement sections. We added the allowance of non-residential temporary signs with some restrictions. Let me come back to that one. The other one's pretty straightforward. We updated the non-conforming sign section. We added a sign code exception for administrative approval. What this means is if there's a sign that's 10% larger, or the font is 10% larger than what's allowed, we can approve that administratively. Right, right, right.
Would you also deny it? Like, what, yeah?
We could also deny it.
Okay.
It's been surprising how many different types of signs have popped up since 2020. I mean, they're, people are creative now, and there are ways to sign things. So, we revised some electric message boards, digital signs, and displays. Another kind of bigger change that we added was to allow for a master sign plan. We have a master sign plan section that we've written in. I think Sheri got it from another municipality that basically allows you to treat a master sign plan like a development plan. So, if you're, it's probably a bad example, but if you're Brookwood, you could come in and say, "Here's our sign package," and all of it would be approved.
Yeah, it would be for developments, 25 acres.
25 acres.
Yeah.
And it allows for them to have an increase in the amount of signage if they master plan. When you can see everything in context, it really does help. And it encourage, having this increase will encourage them to do master plans. Also, if they decide to make changes, well, the master plan will first of all have to be approved by permission. If they make changes to it after it's approved, those changes have to be approved by permission. So, it, you know, requires a thoughtful process. But I have found that this, that it's helpful to the developer and to the city.
Speaking of Brookwood, we removed all of the references to Brookwood Mall, so they used to have their own sign section. That's gone now. We added an allowance for wall-mounted signs on the secondary facade. So, currently, you're only allowed one wall sign on the front of your building, but if you're on a corner lot, now you can have a secondary wall sign on the secondary front of your building that's half the size.
Also, if you are, you have an accessible alley behind your building, you have a sign on the back of your building that identifies, you build your business to the people who own the alley.
So, for example, 18th Street and the parking lot behind it, they all have signs on the back. They all had to come to council and ask for permission to put those signs on the back of the building. They won't have to do that anymore. And we have prohibited internal illumination within the downtown sign district on canopy, sculptural, wall-mounted window, and monument signs. This has been prohibited. This has been, I'm not sure if it's been prohibited or not, but council has heard tons and tons of internal illumination variance requests. But we're just going to prohibit it, so there will not, you can't be allowed for variance. You can't be allowed a variance for that. They'll have to be externally illuminated with goose neck lighting and however else you want to do it. Back to the temporary signs. We talked in the other room about temporary signs and what they are. They're a material. We can't regulate what's on them. And the downtown district has never allowed them, but we've been asked to allow them in the downtown district.
So, how, so, again, like it's a real estate sign, for example, a lease, for lease sign. How have we dealt with that? Like, because I know there's a sign on 31 that's permanently there outside of the Am South Building or the Regent's Building, Am South. Going back to 90s here again. We're having a lot of 90s conversations.
We're talking about that sign today.
Yeah, so, yeah, how have we dealt with that in the past?
Nothing. We haven't, Scott Jones has said it. We need to address that one. Because it needs, there needs to be a way for property owners or management companies to advertise these...
Vacancies.
The, allowing the temporary signs in the downtown district. In areas like the Long Island Street, only in the downtown sign districts can you put a police sign, for instance, and as a window sign. And you can also have a ground-mounted temporary sign. And they were never allowed before, and so you never knew. I mean, I think they were just doing it.
Yeah, that's my question. I mean, did you get complaints? I mean, it's never come to the council. I mean, did you all get complaints about that?
It came to the council when they made a mistake and asked Wyatt for a permit for one. And so, Wyatt said they're not allowed. And so Wyatt said they're not allowed, and then it came to council and the council said, oh, they're prohibited, no way you're, you can put up that sign, and it's like, no, no. And that's kind of what.
Signs are just.
I think there's a lot of discussion in twenty twenty, about temporary signs out there. Nobody wanted them, and, um, and then it changed.
Mm-hmm.
Signs are hard.
Yeah, they're hard, they are, they're really hard.
Submation. Tweet.
I feel like there's been an increase in development, therefore an increase in need, but the, you know, an increase with the need of having these for lease signs, these for, you know, I mean, am I wrong? I mean, there's been a lot of development in the last few years and that's the need for them, right? So are we handicapping, you know, a business to not allow them to advertise that they have space for lease?
Well, not necessarily handicapping the business, but we are, we offer the option, ask them to sell it. Or lease.
Well, I, I guess I'm envisioning, you know, for example, the, the new development, that's going to go across from where the battery is, you know, in that lot, that built-out Alabama power lot. That's going to be a development, there's going to be open spaces for lease in that development, that's, that's where the, that's where the conversation started, right? From that development. How would somebody know how they're going to, you know, I know there's the internet, but how would you know if you're driving by, you want to. Who to contact about that, you know, leasing that space?
This would allow for a large sign that could, could include the name of the developer, the, you know, coming soon, you know, contact, this would then, or just space. All of that could be, um, this, and it just allows for a large enough area to put a lot of information.
This is something that could be obviously revisited, right?
Sure.
So if it's not, if it's proliferating and it's beyond our control.
If it's not working, we can come back and fix it. Um, but based on the, um, a lot of the changes that we made are based on the variances.
Mm-hmm, right.
That city council was here.
Yep. But we did, but we did not, it never came to, I mean, we, like you said, because it's prohibited use. Right, because that never came to us, that's, that's my question, that's my question, that doesn't work.
Oh, yeah.
And the other stuff, I'm absolutely, because that is the stuff that we hear all the time, all the, internal illumination. Second temporary, you know, on a, I mean, that second sign on a, on a corner lot, or like you said, the Eighteenth Street, I mean, that's the stuff we hear all the time. But my question specifically on the temporary signs, is that something we can revisit?
Temporary signs don't work for me, yes, yeah. You know, it usually takes, I don't like to make changes to an ordinance for a year. And it usually takes that longer, really, if your ad was working and it's not. But with temporary signs, especially downtown, we should definitely, because it's a small area that we're talking about. That, um, and it, it allows for signs, temporary signs in residential areas where they weren't allowed. Just about right and without a time limitation for somebody who wants to let everybody know what their son's put on a roof, that their house is for sale, I mean, where signs are allowed.
I thought it was in here before, but the, just curious, the definition for a flag versus a sign, how does it differ? Is it different by section at all? Like, could I, could I deem a flag a sign or vice versa?
A flag can be a sign if it has the name of your business on it. But, um, as far as the United States flag, we follow to the federal regulations. If I, a flag, we have a definition.
Hunter searched flags.
May, may not be relevant to this, so it wouldn't necessarily have to hold, I was just curious.
Winslow, you have stumped the teacher.
I think I had to look at.
It's signs that do not require a permit, the flag or insignia of any organization, however, the display of more than two flags on a flag pole is not permitted. No flag may exceed thirty square feet in an area, only one side of the flag is subject to area calculation. So they don't require a permit if they're, if they're on a pole.
So you can have any flag, pretty much?
What's that?
Well, you could deem a, you could deem a sign a flag.
So if, if it's hang, if it's like hanging on the front of your building, that's, that's totally different thing. That's a banner sign.
Okay.
Yep.
It's on a flag pole.
Then it's a flag.
It's a flag.
Okay. And there's no regulation?
For a flag on a flag pole? No, not other than what I just read, it's not, they don't require a permit. But again, you can only, you can't have more than two and they can't be larger than thirty square feet.
Were we just talking about American flags or were we talking about any flag?
No. We're not, we're talking about everything but American flags.
No, it's the, the flag or insignia of any organization.
Except the American flag, which has its own.
And number three is the flag of the United States, as explained in the Board of State Federal Guidelines.
So essentially, any flag that's not on a pole is a sign?
Yes.
Yes.
If there are no other questions, I would entertain a, a motion to approve item number two. The incorporation of the sign ordinance into the zoning ordinance and the amendments as discussed today. Uh, I guess as reflected in the draft dated December three, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
He was entertaining.
I was entertaining the motion, I think.
I'll second Winslow's motion.
Ms. Armstead made the motion and Ms. Andrews second.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that will also, item two also go with a positive recommendation to the city council. Uh, item number three, I believe, Sherry, I believe you discussed this before, I don't think there's anything further to discuss. Simply, item number three is to revise the subdivision regulations to change the mailing, public mailing notification requirement from certified mail to U.S. first-class mail.
We make a motion to approve.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There being none, okay, that will also go forward to the city council with a positive recommendation. And, all right, that's all we have for new business, any further communications from the staff? Okay, well, with that all.
I hope everybody has great holidays.
Yes, thank you, same to you.
Same to you.
All right, well, with that, we'll adjourn.